Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is Monday, September 18, 2017, at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request a roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Staden?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Boudreau?
Here.
Polly?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Thank you, all present and accounted for. Item three is discussion impossible action regarding approving the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce proclamation. Judy, you want to do some introductions first, please? Distinguished front row there. Got the camera working, Dan?
Testing.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Judy Knudsen. I'm the executive director of the chamber, and I would like to pass the microphone so they can introduce themselves. They are my board of directors, and I'm glad they're here tonight, so thank you for coming.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elise Smith-Bach, and I'm currently the vice chair on the Oregon Area Chamber of Board. I'm also vice president at Oregon Community Bank.
J.J. Geezy. I work at TICI in sales and marketing, and current past president of the chamber.
Stacy Boudreau, current chamber president, and I'm a mortgage lender at McFarland State Bank.
Bridget Krieger. I'm with the state bank of Cross Plains. I'm a business banker there, and I am a board member.
Dan Donahue. I'm also a board member, and my wife and I own the Chocolate Caper.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. A couple other people couldn't make it tonight because they have either sick kids or still at school, so, thank you. So if you want to go ahead, Steve, and read the proclamation, that'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, first, I would like to say thanks to your board. You've all done a very good job of supporting Judy, and a lot to further the growth of the community in a way that connects people, informs relationships, and people enjoy living and working here. So, thank you, we appreciate that, and keep up the good work. Okay, so we have a proclamation. I think you all have that. We'll continue our... We've done it last few times, and each read a section. So I will start this off. This is a proclamation that announces September as Chamber of Commerce Month. So, I'll do the first section, and move to jury and right around the room. Whereas there are 267 local chambers of commerce servicing villages, towns, and cities throughout Wisconsin.
Whereas these chambers provide a wide variety of services to their members, including advocacy and economic development.
Whereas many chambers promote tourism and other community events.
Whereas chambers also work to solve critical economic challenges, including addressing labor shortage and encouraging entrepreneurship.
Whereas chambers are critical community partners and problem solvers with the unique ability to work with stakeholders from both the private and public sectors.
Whereas chambers do not always receive the recognition and credit they deserve for making Wisconsin a better place to live, work, and play.
Now therefore, Scott Walker, governor of the state of Wisconsin, does hereby proclaim September 2017 as Chamber of Commerce Month in Wisconsin.
Thanks, everyone, for taking part, and thanks, chamber, for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Judy?
Nope. The next one, I think, is our video, so...
Okay, great. So we will go to item four, which is the viewing of the community promotional video.
And I just want to say a couple words about that. I'm very excited that it turned out the way it did. Some of you were at the viewing the other night, on last Thursday night. Thank you to Jeanie Carpenter, who gave me a little bit of help there. And also, in the back, you will see Tim Olson, who is the three of us who were the troublemakers, putting it all together. We do have Dan Sutter, Frank Caruso, Paul Zwicker, and whom am I missing? Kermit Treska. I'll help take videos outside in the community, so I just wanted to thank them, too. So, without ado, Tim, you want to go ahead?
Sure.
We hope to be able to put this on the... We're going to put it on our website, as well as the village's website. We are also going to open it up to, like, we already had Remax call us and ask to put on their website for bringing people to our community. And we hope it goes on the police's website, too, because we're going to use it for Safe Community for you to hire more police officers.
Also residents, too.
Residents, too.
Through social media. Please share. Okay, here we go.
So, very nicely done. How about we turn it around and show once more for the people in the audience?
I think they've seen this one.
Have you all seen it?
Yeah, they've got to see it from here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like we're fine, everybody's caught up. Okay.
And I want to thank the village board also for their financial, and also, Mike, for putting up with me all week, all month, trying to figure this out and wanting to get it all done. So, thank you so much for helping us out. Appreciate it for everything you do for all year round, too. So, thank you.
Thanks. Teamwork always works well.
It does, doesn't it?
Okay, so we're going to move a couple things around on the agenda. I know I have one person here who would like to speak to board under item 11, community input, so we're going to go to that right away. And that item for community input, allow us members of public to provide information to the village board, including items not listed on the board's agenda. We are not able to discuss those because they're not on the agenda, but it does give people a chance to talk to board. So, I know, Tom, you would like to speak to board. You come forward, please. You've got about three minutes. And welcome.
Hi, Steve. This is... I'm Tom Bjornson. For those of you who haven't met me, and I've lived in this town in the same house my whole life, and the past seven years have been really hard, with my sister moving in with us for a while. And then, four years ago, my mother stopped walking. I now have... She doesn't even stand and pivot anymore. I have to lift her up in a lift, like a hydraulic jack. So, there was a... I've been having some problems with a neighbor over the past few years, and he complained to the village about public ordinance stuff, meaning the place was a mess. Well, cleaned it up last year, and then I complained about a neighbor draining his basement water into my garden, and before my other neighbor had put a drain in, the one that I'm having a problem with, my brother and I, years ago, used to go out in a canoe between us and Paul Keenan's place, there was enough water for that, but I've been having a problem with, for years, with a... With my neighbor, Mike, I can't even think of his name, I'm so mad.
Yeah, that's fine. We don't need that right now. Thank you.
So, anyway, I have all this to do, and, like I told Jeff Row when I first met him, around my home, I'm the one that washes every dish and rakes every leaf, and I got all this to do alone. I do have some plans for the near future. One is to do this grape trellis, which I've been wanting to do for the past five years, and also, I'm going to have Project Homes come, but they won't do anything until they can get up in the attic and put in insulation in the attic. But before doing that, I have to buy boxes to put clothes and other things in, so that the Project Homes guys can get upstairs, because we had to pack everything around when we switched the dining room table out to have extra room for my... We took out the couch and got a hospital bed there, and I sleep on an air mattress next to my mother for her every cure, every drink and cough drop and Kleenex. I'm going to make it work. Oh, yeah. Sometime, sometime, you, Steve, and Jeff, and Officer Olson can come some other time.
Thirty seconds, Tom.
Okay. But my brother's got to be there. You know, I'm really working on it. I don't want to have a time with a deadline. This might take a few years, but I'm seriously working on it. I just want... And I don't like the idea of the government coming in like a bunch of jackbooted government thugs, where, you know, and stealing my canoe trailer with my beaver traps, or my boat, or my ice fishing shack. I got a 14-foot Lumacraft boat I don't want to take, and I got other things that I don't want stolen or vandalized, vandalized, that's thousands of dollars' worth of stuff, and sentimental value, too. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
We really can't do that, Tom, it's not on the agenda, so...
I didn't know.
Yeah, I know. I understand.
I guess I can leave, so other people have. So I finally meet you. Always. People who I've never met before.
Good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch for that meeting you talked about.
Good, man.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good, man. Good to see you again.
Bye.
Okay, so we'll go back to item five, public appearance. Item A, discussion of police union agreement with Labor attorney Kyle Julia and possible board action. The recommendation is to approve the agreement between the Village of Oregon Police Department and Local 421 of the Wisconsin Professional Police Association, Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division, January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Welcome, Kyle.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again, as always.
A pleasure, as always, board. See all of you. Chief Mike, please. Through negotiations with the police union, we were able to reach a tentative agreement with them. The negotiations were very good, I think, with both parties, trying to problem-solve and address certain matters that existed between them, specifically one of the matters related to the wage rates, things of that nature, that are designed to help Oregon attract and retain high-quality talent for its law enforcement officer pool. One of the matters that we sought to address is something that Chief Yule had certainly raised as a concern, which is that it's a very difficult market right now to try and find highly qualified law enforcement officers who are the type...
the village should be in a very competitive position. You're not gonna be at the top, uh, but you're most likely not gonna be at the bottom anymore. You're gonna be in that middle, maybe upper-tiered ground, um, uh, from that standpoint is where I, where I would forecast you'd end up.
But it's a little premature because other contracts aren't settled yet.
Exactly, yep, yep. There are other communities that are going in negotiations, yep.
Okay. In relation to insurance premiums, um, where are the, where does this place the police officers in relationship to other village employees?
As it pertains to other village employees.
Yeah, is it similar to what they're paying?
The, the officers have always been a little bit different, I think, than the other village employees. My recollection is right, they're paying ninety-five percent of the lowest-cost plan. Now, they're gonna be paying a tiered structure down after the, at, at the end of the contract term, paying ninety-two point, the village will pay ninety-two-point-five percent of the premium. Um, with regard to your other employees, because they're in the state plan, there's a set amount that they are required to pay. But that's based on a different formula of the average cost plan, uh, which would be twelve percent essentially of the average cost plan. Being here in Dane County, there are some communities where it may be that the individuals aren't paying the fixed twelve percent. They might be paying a little bit less than that. So, the rest of the village employees are still, I think, under a different structure in that regard. Lisa, if I'm incorrect, let me know.
No, that's correct.
Yeah.
It's totally two different calculations.
Yep.
Right, but are the other employees paying less or more?
It, it, it depends by the year.
Yeah.
Based on what the average cost plan is.
Right.
Um, but I would forecast that there are gonna be some years that the village employees, uh, the non-police employees are going to be paying less than the police union employees. And then there may be years where they may pay more.
Okay.
Yeah, the numbers just came out today for next year, is my understanding.
Okay.
Um, so it'll be interesting to see what, what 2018 looks like for what the other village employees would pay.
Okay.
Yep.
I can ask that question in the future, though.
You got it, yeah. Every year, you can ask it.
Do most municipalities try to square up the departments within, or do they, or do most municipalities treat the departments as separate?
So, there are different benefits that, um, employees will enjoy in various departments. And, um, you have employers that try to have a fairly symbiotic benefit structure. Uh, but it's not uncommon to have two different structures with regard to what the premium contribution is, um, for the police union employees versus the other village employees. It's not an uncommon structure for that to exist. Um, there are places, though, where they try to have them under the same tiered struc, or under the same structure.
And we have fire union employees, which is, which is another separate.
Yep.
Package.
Yep, yep.
So, would mo, most municipalities would have the three distinct packages?
It, it, it very, it, I, I can think of municipalities where they have, fire union is paying one set for the premium contribution. Police might pay a different amount, and the rest of the employees may pay a different amount. And then we have communities where the health insurance plan that's offered to police union employees and fire union employees may differ from what it is for the regular employees. Yep. Typically, that plan is not as generous. The non-represented employees typically have a slightly nicer plan in that regard. Yep. Few and far between, but that does exist. You have unilateral control with regard to your health insurance premiums involving your non-represented employees. Um, and so, it's up to the village board, essentially, to decide how you want to deal with that. The only responsibility that you have being in the state plan is to meet that twelve percent of the average cost plan threshold. And again, that varies by the year, depending on what plans are offered here in Dane County.
Other questions, Jerry?
Yes, uh, Mike or Lisa, uh, when you did the, when we did the budget last year, what was in the budget? Was there something close to what the settlement is here?
You mean for, for wages?
Yes.
Well, th, this would be part of the 2018 budget.
Okay.
And actually, when, if you look at the handout, we hand it out in the plastic folder, it's, it's on that list, Jerry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, anyone? Anything else, Kyle?
No, I think the, the, the agreement here is a three-year deal. And that's good. I mean, I, you know, if, if we can have some stability from that standpoint, I think that, uh, that certainly was an objective that the chief and Mike and Lisa wanted to achieve. And, um, this does it. I think it solves some of the, uh, some of the outlined questions that existed amongst the parties and, uh, saves you a lot of money because we had a contract that's now settled for three years, and I don't have to, uh, be involved for collective bargaining negotiations for that period of time. So, all in all, I think it's a good deal.
Well, we'll miss seeing you, but we do appreciate.
Enjoy seeing all of you, but yes.
We appreciate your good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think it's fair to say that, uh, the board is very pleased to support a police department. Uh, Chief Yule gives us great leadership, and, uh, this will help him to recruit additional officers of the type that he needs when we have vacancies. So, I think it's a, a good thing all the way around. So, any other questions or comments, anyone? Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve the agreement between the Village of Oregon Police Department and Local 421 of the Wisconsin Professional Police Association Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division from January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it.
Okay, 5B is from the September fourteenth Planning Commission Meeting. So, I will turn it over to our village board rep, G D Carpenter.
Sure. Uh, first item is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Bergamot Preliminary Replat Number One. So, I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary replat number one, and note that we requested the name to be changed so that it would be more, um, explicit.
Second.
Um, so if you get, you have a handout in your packet, um, at the planning commission, we had a map. Uh, basically, um, judiciary decided to make some family lots a little larger along Lickin Drive. They will all have access to Leeburg Lane, and the planning commission thought this was a fine idea.
If you'd like to make any comments?
Uh, no, only if there are any questions I can answer.
Okay. Are there questions for the Bergamot representative? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. How easy can it be?
Thanks for being here, though.
Yeah.
Item number two, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Agreement for the Fifth Addition to Mary Hill Final Plat. So, I'll make the motion that we adopt the development agreement approving the fifth addition to the Mary Hill Final Plat.
Second.
Thank you.
So, you have a handout in this too. Um, Mr. Leece, oh, actually, Mr. Leece was at the planning commission, meaning we had a discussion about, um, approving this plat, and he's also working on a more comprehensive plat for the entire area. Um, but the planning commission thought it was fine to approve this, this first part of it. And I know he's here if you guys have any questions.
Yep. Any, any comments you need to make, Jim, or? Only if there are questions. Okay, are there questions for Mr. Leece?
Is the park that's gonna be developed gonna be a neighborhood park then? Will the park that's planned for the area be a neighborhood park?
I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah, it's a public park.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so there are some, uh, uh, small drafting changes we have to make to the agreement. But just so you know, for example, the stormwater fee that's blank in your, uh, uh, agreement is twenty-five-hundred dollars. So, we have, we have to plug that in. And actually, the, the parkland that Doug's referring to actually, um, is more than what's needed for those lots. So, so Jim will be getting a credit for that for his next plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so my request would be that the motion would be to approve the agreement and authorize, uh, editorial corrections to be made by the village attorney. Got a number of editorial, such as, I've got the wrong date in there. So, Jeff did it. Jeff, can you be my new proofreader?
Yeah.
You did a nice job. He caught a number of, uh, of editorial things that need to be corrected.
It's like, yeah, I'm happy to amend my motion. Who seconded it?
I did, uh, Jerry.
Yep.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, okay. Any further question, comments?
It's like flinching, I just own up to seconding every motion.
Okay, since Matt just mentioned motion, I will just ask for, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Um, item number three is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Termination of Consent and Waiver Agreement for Closing the Median on the Alpine Parkway. So, I'll make a motion that we approve termination of consent and waiver agreement.
I'll second that.
So, you have a, um, probably the map is the easiest way to explain this in your packet. Um, right now, there is an opening in the median along Alpine Parkway, and there is an interested party in, um, purchasing this parcel right next to the dental office. And they, as, as far as I understood it, uh, would not like that median to ever be closed. Is that right, Jeff? They want it to stay open? And apparently, we had some agreement from back from 2002 or '03 that said the village could do it. So, we are now terminating that agreement.
Correct.
And the planning commission was like, okay. That's my summary.
Any questions? Would you have a motion and second, right?
Yes.
Anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Steve, did you want to do the? Yep. Maybe my mind, hold it count.
I marked it a minute ago. So, so we can go into closed session and come back, or we could do the fire truck right away. What's your, what's your request, chief? Want to get done right away?
Whatever you'd like to do.
You know, if they get a call when we're in closed session, that could affect their ability to be part of the conversation.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go to item 13B, because I know the other fire people here would like to go, even if the chief doesn't, so. So, 13B, Discussion of Possible Action Recommendation Oregon Fire Area Fire EMS Commission Purchase Fire Truck Tender, O R T eight, in amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Uh, there's a note, "The district will use fifty-thousand dollars of two percent dues as a down payment for the truck in 2017, with the village and towns paying the balance of the purchase price in 2018."
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion is to approve purchase of fire truck in amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, you know, I'd really like, chief, to, uh, to speak to this, if you got a minute, chief. Talk a little bit about, you know, what a tender could cost and what it's gonna cost and why.
Sure. I gave you a fast rundown. It was efficient, directed me a while ago to basically, you know, start looking, probably, I would say a year ago, but, or at least six months ago, maybe even first of the year, something of that nature. So, we did a, we put an RFP out. We looked at different tenders, uh, throughout the state. We looked at, uh, again, kind of something that's medium duty for Oregon Fire EMS District, something that'd be able to haul water for our rural area, and also be able to, uh, still pump water in our, in our hydrant area and, and, uh, work with, with the village operations and stuff of that nature. Here nor there, uh, what we did at the end, that price came in at about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars if we were to order a, a brand-new one, uh, that kind of thing. After that, we were contacted by a bunch of different vendors about some of the demo units that they had and some different availabilities that were out there. So, this truck that we're looking at purchasing is a demo unit, basically, by one of the manufacturers here in Wisconsin that was offered to the Oregon Fire and EMS District at probably, uh, about forty-some-thousand dollars, less than actually, uh, we would've been able to purchase. This would've been way over a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar truck. So, what this basically is, is a demo truck that has been, uh, gonna be driven around, showed to different places in, in Michigan and Kel, and, uh, Florida, as I recall. And is gonna be available sometime after the first of the year to Oregon to take place of this truck. So, it's not a total brand, brand-new one, but it's pretty close to new, and it'll do just fine for the Oregon EMS District and Fire District here. And I think it's a way of us, uh, keeping our cost means and justification for our tender pumper's that, uh, we need for the duty to go about that direction. So, I think it's a, it's a win-win-win for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And chief, you were talking, just to correct really quick, initially, you said that a new, um, tanker would cost two-forty, but you meant two-eighty.
Uh, right.
You corrected yourself later.
The version that we would've took would've been two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars here. That was on the low end of all the bids that came back. This truck was way over the two-eighty, three-hundred-thousand-dollar category, uh, is what the different options and different stuff. And again, we're getting some, getting a break on it because it's a demo truck, and it's being shown to people to, uh, other potential buyers throughout the country.
Thank you. Any questions, Jerry?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, Jerry.
Chief, um, just for the benefit of the public, why don't you tell the folks what a tender does? What do you use it for?
Okay, keep in mind that this is a tender pumper. It's just not strictly a, the truck that we have over there now, that's a twenty-seven-year-old truck. It's just not just a truck that hauls water. Years ago, of course, you had the, the rural area where you had no hydrants. You got two different options. You bring the water with you, or else you're gonna pump them from some kind of a stream, standing pond, things of that nature. We have those capabilities of doing both. What this particular truck is gonna be able to do is a couple of different things. It's gonna have a thousand-gallon-minute pump on it to bring our ISO reading up for any of our, uh, industrial or any of our businesses, and another pump for here in the village wherever we have hydrants. In addition, we're gonna be able to carry three-thousand gallons of water for our rural operations. And it's also gonna have pump and road for it, uh, pump and roll operations for any of our wildland stuff. So, you can just actually throw the, uh, truck in gear and go down the side of the road and actually spray water at the same time. So, there's, these trucks have really came up, uh, a lot of different benefits over the last thirty-some years of this stuff. But this is the truck that we're looking at, and it's kind of a versatile truck to be able to respond both in the rural area and also the hydrant area when hydrants are down, things of that nature, when Jeff has got, uh, different areas that are under construction, that kind of stuff. We're taking the water with us to that incident and be able to make those operations complete.
Thanks, chief. Um, what's the expected life of this? And you mentioned the current one's like twenty-eight years old.
Correct.
Will this last longer?
This'll last you at least twenty years old.
Okay.
Uh, at least twenty years.
Twenty years.
At least twenty years. Probably taking care, you probably get a little bit more out of that. And the guys in the back of the room are probably like, "Don't commit too much, because we know, Fire Chief, you're gonna be retired before that." But, uh, it's one of those things, it should last you a good twenty, twenty-five years.
They're not smiling.
So, one of them does, so.
You mentioned that this has a lot of extras on it that you weren't gonna, uh, order if you did the, took the low bid.
Yep.
Can you just list a couple of them?
Sure. One of them was water in itself. We're getting, uh, it always costs to go up in length in, in addition on the trucks. And we're getting an extra thousand gallons of water for the same kind of price that we did otherwise. Thousand gallons of water, thinking about G P M, gallons per minute, being used at a fire scene. We're using someplace in that hundred-and-seventy-five to probably two-hundred-and-twenty-five gallons a minute. So, we're gonna gain ourselves about four more, uh, minutes of water, five more minutes of water in our rural operations before our mutual aid, uh, units come in and be able to drop folding tanks and set up more, uh, more relay pumping and water and those operated, operations. So, four gallons, uh, I, you know, four more minutes of firefighting could make a difference, especially if we have somebody inside of a house, trap, things of that nature. In addition, the other thing that was an upgrade on this particular truck was the pump, the G P M. It was actually, we're looking at a seven-hundred-and-fifty-gallon-minute pump, and here they're offering a thousand-gallon-minute pump. Again, in our, in our rural operations, probably seven-fifty would do us just fine. Some of the stuff and some of the building and the development that we're looking at here with, uh, you know, the different hotels that you're talking about developing in the, in the village. You've got the, you've got the Jefferson apartment building, the hundred-and-seventy-some units, things of that nature. That thousand gallons a minute will add us some capacity to be also be able to pull cross- that we have over there now, that's a twenty-seven-year-old truck, it's just not just a truck that hauls water. Years ago, of course, you had the rural area where you had no hydrants, you got two different options, you bring the water with you, or else you're going to pump them from some kind of a stream, standing pond, things of that nature. We have those capabilities of doing both. What this particular truck is going to be able to do is a couple of different things. It's going to have a thousand-gallon-minute pump on it to bring our ISO rating up for any of our industrial or any of our businesses, and another pump for here in the village, wherever we have hydrants. In addition, we're going to be able to carry 3,000 gallons of water for our rural operations, and it's also going to have pump and road for, pump and roll operations for any of our wildland stuff, so you can just actually throw the truck in gear and go down the side of the road and actually spray water at the same time. So there's, these trucks have really came up, a lot of different benefits over the last thirty-some years of this stuff, but this is the truck that we're looking at, and it's kind of a versatile truck to be able to respond both in the rural area and also the hydrant area when hydrants are down, things of that nature, when Jeff has got different areas that are under construction, that kind of stuff, we're taking the water with us to that incident and be able to make those operations complete.
Thanks, Chief. What's the expected life of this? And you mentioned the current one's like twenty-eight years old.
Correct.
Will this last longer?
This'll last you at least twenty years old. At least twenty years. At least twenty years. Probably taking care, you probably get a little bit more out of that, and the guys in the back of the room are probably like, don't commit too much, because we know Fire Chief, you're going to be retired before that, but it's one of those things, it should last you a good twenty, twenty-five years.
They're not smiling.
They, they, no. So one of them does, so.
You mentioned that this has a lot of extras on it that you weren't going to order if you did the, took the low bid.
Yep.
Can you just list a couple of them?
Sure. One of them was water in itself. We're getting, it always costs to go up in length in addition on the trucks, and we're getting an extra thousand gallons of water for the same kind of price that we did otherwise. Thousand gallons of water, thinking about GPM, gallons per minute being used at a fire scene, we're using someplace in that 175 to probably 225 gallons a minute, so we're going to gain ourselves about four more minutes of water, five more minutes of water in our rural operations before our mutual aid units come in and be able to drop folding tanks and set up more relay pumping and water and those operated, operations. So four gallons, you know, four more minutes of firefighting could make a difference, especially if we have somebody inside of a house, trap, things of that nature. In addition, the other thing that was an upgrade on this particular truck was the pump, the GPM, was actually, we're looking at a 750-gallon-minute pump, and here they're offering a thousand-gallon-minute pump. Again, in our rural operations, probably 750 would do us just fine. Some of the stuff and some of the building and the development that we're looking at here with, you know, the different hotels that you're talking about developing in the village, you've got the Jefferson apartment building, the hundred-and-seventy-some units, things of that nature, that thousand gallons a minute will add us some capacity to be also be able to pull crosslays or hose lines to the room of origin or fighting the fire on that floor. In addition, we'll be able to supply the stand pipes or the automatic sprinklers in that building when and if we need it. So that helps and kind of brings it all around with ISO, the insurance rating services, again, for the businesses of the village where it really costs them dollars and cents per thousand on their insurance premiums, when the Fire District does our next ISO rating, our rating should actually start coming down, not only with the additional staffing that we have, but with an upgrade to the pumps and the additional pump, being a Class 1 pumper, being able to put out fire. So those were the two biggest things that we really actually, that we actually got out of that with this particular demo truck.
Thanks, Glenn.
You betcha.
Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve the purchase of fire truck in amount of $239,983. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Thanks for all the work you've done. Thanks, boys.
So that takes us back to item six. The board will meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851E, to consider possible acquisition of property in TIF number four.
So, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brethower?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Gudrow?
Yes.
Bernier?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we'll head across the hall and then return.
Welcome back, everyone. The board is in a short closed session. We are now back and we're on item eight, which is village attorney report. Item A, discussion possible action regarding ordinance number seventeen dash twelve at ordinance to create section seven point zero three five sub six related to restricted turning. No left turn from South Perry Parkway into the easterly entrance of Rome Corners Intermediate School from seven AM to four PM on days when school is in session, and the school district supports this ordinance. The recommended motion, possible first motion to consider, the board by two thirds vote, the board members may suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Possible second motion to consider, the board chooses to suspend the rules, the board may then consider ordinance number seventeen dash twelve at tonight's meeting. Seeing the motion or the first motion?
So I was confused.
So I'll make the motion to suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll make the second motion to suspend the rule or to approve the ordinance as presented at tonight's meeting.
And that's ordinance number seventeen dash twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anything we need from staff on this, or?
It's just something that there's been, as anyone knows, been dropping kids off early in the morning or afternoon. At RCI, there's been some issues and trouble with some of the school buses getting through on the routes and everything, and so we've met with school district officials about this, worked out some options, and they'll actually be installing a no-left turn sign as well out of the west exit from their property, but that's on their property, and that's why they'll be doing that independently. And we hope this will help. I don't know if it'll totally solve the problem, but.
Okay. Okay, any questions on what Jeff said or anything else? Yes, we had the motion second to approve ordinance number seventeen dash twelve at the meeting tonight regarding turning lane at Rome Corners Intermediate School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is approval of minutes. There are none before us tonight. Item ten is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in about six hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred seven dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Vendor three oh oh five, Fox and Sons, had water leak at Alpine Parkway. Was that through their negligence, or was that just?
It's a very good question.
Active nature.
It was not an active nature. I think this was a water, when they dug up in the lateral, they found that the lateral had been kind of bent up and kinked and was probably something that occurred during construction. And they required us to dig that up, and with, you know, there's a significant leak. We dug it up. It took, you know, Fox and Sons about a day to fix it. So that's one of those ones, like, how do you decide who to go after? It was a couple of years ago or longer than that when that was put in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
T D?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, if we could bounce down to the library replacement PCs and monitors, is that something that was budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. Is that under or over budget or at budget?
Something that we budget for annually. We're on a rotation so that none of our computers are past warranty because without that, we can't be, can't have central library system be in charge of servicing and maintaining our computers. So that's part of our agreement with them.
Okay. Thanks, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, T D?
Item one oh six one one, the Arbor Systems, does that remove the trees at the former Methodist Church property?
Correct.
Okay. They did a nice job with that, I thought.
They did a really nice job with that, and I should say that, and I know we mentioned this in memo, but we did reserve what we felt was, and what the wood cycle felt was usable pieces from that, and we hope to incorporate that in some fashion either into tables or furniture for the future library or whatever's put on the site there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, we have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in the amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred seven dollars and eight cents. Roll call, please.
Staten?
Yes.
Pauling?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brineer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Udro?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, we're at community input again. Anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item twelve, proclamations and announcements by the board. Anyone?
I just have a comment. On Clover Lane, they came in to fix our manhole cover because it had sunk, but also that our road really needs repairing too. I've talked to Jeff about that too. But I, really, there are a lot of streets here in town that really do have to have a lot of repairs, and I think that's something that we're really going to have to check on.
Anyone else? Any comments? Item B, staff comments?
We decided to close the village hall on Friday afternoon. We get packets out, so at this point, we're closing it.
Okay.
And we thought it'd be easier than, you know, closing it one Friday and not closing it. We decided to make it consistent and close it.
Good. Do you want to go through anymore?
And Jeff, you want to do two?
Sure. Just, I sent a memo out today and we had it on Facebook and the website just about the contractors planning on starting a utility water line construction along Alpine Parkway between Oregon Parks Avenue and Netherwood, kind of in that grass area between Alpine Parkway and the bike path. And during this time period, we're actually going to be shutting or closing the bike path from Oregon Parks up to Netherwood. It'll be signed. We have some signs made for out there as well as some barricades set up a little earlier on the path to warn people about that. The contractor, we've asked to try to stay within that area outside the driveway, but there'll still be things being delivered, and there'll probably be some orange barrels along there along the pavement edge. Traffic will still be allowed to go through. There will be probably two periods of time when traffic will be closed on north Alpine Parkway between Oregon Parks and Netherwood as they install the main connection across to the new subdivision. All we got.
Good.
As far as meeting schedule, we are going to cancel the committee meetings next Monday night, and then so the next time we'll see each other is on the twenty-seventh at the senior center for the joint meeting with the towns. And then we have the board meeting on the second, and then there's the budget schedule on the next page.
Okay. Isn't there an employee appreciation meeting coming up?
That's not really a meeting. That's just a.
What is that?
That's on the twenty-eighth of September.
Thanks.
At eleven thirty. At twenty-eight, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that takes us to item thirteen, communication and miscellaneous business. And item A, discussion possible board direction regarding preliminary two thousand eighteen budget. So Mike and Lisa?
So there was information in your packet. We tried to get it on Friday, but we just ran out of time, so sorry about not having any packet for the week when we look at. I think maybe let's do the, Lisa and me will do the chart first, the spreadsheet. So this is the spreadsheet that Lisa has prepared and will have prepared when we do, when we actually give you the budget on October sixth. And as I promised, what you're seeing is maybe for the first time ever, basically the department had submittals without me making any changes to it, or to them, I should say. And so this is what you have in front of you, and what we're saying is that without making any changes, we adopted the budget tonight, which obviously we're not going to do that. On an average house, taxes would go up almost ninety dollars. Now, I want to emphasize something that Lisa and I do something that not everyone does, which is we try to give people a realistic idea what their taxes are going to be. So like, we always call the assessor up and we say, what is the average value of a house? And so last year was, or for this year is two fifty-seven. Lee is saying for next year, it's going to be two seventy-five. And so what somebody has to do is you have to figure out what your value is times the net tax rate, and that's what you really, will be the impact for the village. But this is on an average house, it would go up about ninety dollars without making any changes by me. And as you can see on a point here, in this column here, this is showing the increase and decrease of the levy for those funds. The general fund levy is going up one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The SICLE fund is actually going down twenty thousand dollars at this point. That's where we pay some retiring employees out when they're retiring. The library fund, as we note, was moved out of the general fund in two thousand seventeen, and that's going up almost sixty thousand dollars. The debt service for TIF three is actually going down almost twenty thousand dollars, but the post, the general debt service for the village is going up over two hundred thousand dollars. And as Jim was here at the last meeting, he's explaining that that's going to continue to go up as we borrow for things like street improvements and things like that, including at some point the library and senior center. I will say that this impact would even be higher if it wasn't for amazing growth we had. Lisa and I checked this number over, what, three times, maybe four times. If you look at this sus value, we've crossed over the billion dollar value, and we knew that was coming, but it's a significant jump. As you can see, it's over eight percent, and we're not going to have this kind of year every year, but it certainly came at a good time with our debt service going up for eighteen. And the last couple of things here, if you look at the bottom of the page, in last year, our net new construction value was one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. For eighteen, it's one hundred and fifty-three, and what that means is that's the state telling you that that's the most you can increase your levy excluding debt service for years. That's what the property tax cap is about. And so we got fortunate that we had a good year of growth hitting in for eighteen. We do not anticipate that happening for nineteen, but possibly twenty-twenty if we keep growing. And so, I mean, two of the themes here are that we have to continue, when we can, to control our operating costs in the village as much as we can, and we need to continue to grow. Not rapidly, but we need to have a very steady growth, which is what we've been having. And so, you know, we're fortunate that we have a potential of having, if you include Bergamot, four subdivisions going on, which is good for us for going forward.
Susan, I have a question.
Absolutely.
You indicated that next year, or in nineteen, that you don't anticipate the growth.
Right.
Do in twenty?
Well, because you always have to look what's hitting as of one-one of the previous year. And so when you, actually, we can look at what's coming up on the agenda. Lisa puts in here the building permits and the value, and if you look at last year compared to where we are now, we're at twenty-six single-family permits, I think. Somewhere in there. I think last year it was almost forty-something, and so you can kind of project that we're not going to have the value that we had. For example, those townhomes along Jefferson Street hit, the Bergamot townhomes, and so those are now built. They're on the, you know, they're not going to increase the value like they did when they first came onto the assess level.
Right, because they don't come on immediately when the permits.
It's what is assessed as of one-one of that year.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions on this, anyone?
Okay, so then Lisa prepared this, it's just a short summary sheet of, we're calling it the key elements. We tried to go through the budget. And, you know, people are saying, why is this, why is the budget going up? Peggy decided to have four elections next year. I don't know why, but she decided that. So that's fun, yeah. So that's going up forty-five thousand dollars. We are continuing to just spend legal fees. We're a growing community, and that's one of the aspects of it. We're having Matt here, and we're working on development issues. The other thing is happening in prosecution that with the chief's direction and guidance, we're taking more things to trial. Am I saying that right?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. And we have, as the board's been committed to doing salary adjustments, we're trying to increase that ability to do that in two thousand eighteen, so we actually increased that by ten thousand at this point. You just approved the new union contract for the police department, and just for salaries alone, it's almost going up sixty thousand dollars. We, at this point, we have an across-the-board adjustment for non-union employees of two percent. And actually, two percent, based on what I'm reading, is actually almost a little bit under the private sector. We used to be a little above the private sector, now we're a little behind that across the board, but we're also trying. But we're also trying to do market adjustments, so I think we'll be okay. The fire protection district increased $60,000. Actually, that was actually higher than that, but Glenn worked with the commission to reduce that already. The library increase is going up almost $60,000 for the step plan and one market wage adjustment. At this point, as Kyle said, we just got the numbers for health insurance, so we have a 6% increase in there. And Lisa and Peggy will be working, trying to figure out what the real adjustment is. We think it's gonna go down at least a little bit. And then at this point, we have 5% for insurance for auto and property. And so, with all that, plus the department head's submittals, going back to their page, it's about a $90 increase for an average house. And so, obviously, the question we have for you is, are you comfortable with that? Or do you just, I guess, that's what you're, and maybe it's not fair, but you just saw this. Again, I apologize, we tried to get it on Friday, but we just didn't have time to do it.
Why don't we give you our reaction during the budget process?
Well, the idea was, I'm starting my meetings tomorrow with the department heads for the next two weeks. I, on October, well, we could wait, you could do that on October 2, but that's the week I'm actually giving you the budget, on October 6, so.
You know, I think, Mike, from my perspective, you know, you're going to have to increase property taxes in order to do the type of work that needs to be done to make sure that Oregon continues to grow and thrive. And right now, what we're talking about is investing in our people and investing in our infrastructures, conversations we've been having will continue to have.
Yeah, I agree.
The question to me then becomes, well, what can we expect for increases and what's manageable, given that? And I think $90, I think under $100 for the average home is reasonable. I think if you could get it to 60, that'd be awesome. But the fact that it's at 90, I'm comfortable with that.
There is, thank you, Jeff. When Jim was here, you know, I think, Jenna, you asked that question about the $60 increase for the general fund last, at the last meeting. And so, you know, that was a placeholder number we have in the CIP for doing the debt service analysis. There's also the danger of actually going too low, where we try to hold taxes down, and then when we borrow for the library and the senior center, that we have a spike in taxes. And so, I know Jim was here, he'd be saying, you know, if you want to reduce it, you can reduce it, but don't go too low. And so, I would say $60, if we can somehow get it down there, to me, that would be the lowest we should do for '18.
And, you know, truthfully, I think this is one of those things where sometimes you can be penny-wise and pound foolish. You know, you might think that because your taxes aren't going up, that that's a good thing for you, but it's a short, it's a short-sighted view to the reality, which is as you start to lose staff because they're finding better pay than other communities, and as you're not able to attract new staff, and as the workload gets heavier for the staff that's here, and then you start to lose staff because of the stress that's associated with being here, you get into this downward spiral. And what you find is, is that you can't get out without shocking the system. And I think we've seen some of that when we've looked at comparable salaries for the library, we've looked at comparable salaries for the fire department, for the police department, and found out that in our attempt to try to do the right thing for the community, we fell to the bottom of our peer group. And we're recognizing that because we're losing talent. And we're lucky that we haven't lost more. And if we don't start to take the steps necessary to put us in the middle of the pack, that problem's only gonna get worse, not better.
Thank you, because that's actually an item that's coming up, the senior center. That's the goal with the senior center this year, is to get it in, get them back into the middle of the... What did Jim say last week? We should try to be average, right?
Yeah, try to be average.
No, I think we're taking steps to correct the salary.
Yeah, we are, and we should be. When I first got here, we used to be in the middle of the pack for almost everything, and we definitely have slips, so we need to be working on that.
No, we're recognizing that and taking action on it.
Mm-hmm.
I have a comment.
Please.
So I know this is just a summary, but when I look at these budgeted, or these bullet points, I see things that we really can't, we can't control. Like, we can't control elections, we can't control the cost of health insurance, auto property insurance. We're keeping our fire protection at the same level. We're paying our police officers a little bit more so we can actually get some good people. With the library increase, we have to keep doing the step plan, so in 2021, we don't open a big empty building. That would be kind of embarrassing. So I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we get it below $90, when it seems like all of these things are things we sort of have to do? You know what I mean? Do you have any?
I have some ideas, with Lisa's help. We could probably get it down a little bit. I mean, and part of it is that, like, the health insurance, you know, that may come in at maybe 4.5%, so we could, you know, we could reduce the budget like that. And, yeah, I'm not sure I can get down to $60, you know, $60, excuse me.
I don't know how you're gonna get down to 60, just based on these bullet points.
Yeah. But I think what we could do, if Lisa would help me do this, you know, we could come up with some ideas and then, you know, maybe bounce that off the village board during the budget process and get your reaction to it. I agree with you, some of it we don't really, we can't really control, I agree.
I mean, I guess, like Jeff, I'm comfortable with this, but it'd be nice if we could get it down a little, but I don't know if that's possible.
Yep.
And still, and still continue, you know, smart, steady growth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's exactly my feeling too. I can live with 90 if we can come down a bit. I also think, you know, as we move forward with libraries at the last meeting, that we need to be sure that we keep in mind we have five departments and keep them proceeding along too. So, you know, I'm fine with 90 if we can bring it down a bit. Some options we can look at, and we will not say take any of those out.
Yep.
Yeah, and that 90 is just the village portion. There are other components in the property tax bill.
Yep. And again, I want to emphasize, oh, sorry.
But we don't have control over those, Jerry.
No, but I'm just saying, you know, you look at 90 and say, "Use my taxes when I'm 90", that's not bad.
Yeah.
But that's just one, you know, we got the county part, we got the vocational school, and we got the school tax. So, you know, it's gonna depend on how our other partners do.
Yeah.
And that $90, you know, like I said at the beginning of all this, could be less or greater depending how much your house increased from last year to this year. I mean, so again, you started just using an average value, so.
And if I look at this and understand it, you're saying the home value this year is 275, right? Average home, 275.
Pretty amazing.
It is pretty amazing.
And that's reflected in, you know, obviously, we had great growth, which helped us get over the billion-dollar mark, but also just the whole village value went up because as the economy's getting better. And I'm hearing from people that people are putting their houses on the market, and people are outbidding each other, actually more than the asking price, which then the assessor hears that and sees that, not hears it, sees that, and it affects the value of the house. And it affects the whole neighborhood, and that's helping to drive the value up, so.
And we're doing all the right things, people want to live here.
Yeah.
And that drives up value.
I think, you know, again, the department has did a great job submitting their budgets to me on time. And I think as you get, we get to the point where we adopt the budget on November 20, I think you're gonna look back, and we're gonna do a lot of things again in '18 that are good for the village, including a major street project, darling, just so you know. And we're just gonna talk about that during his budget presentation, so.
You have to just wait.
Thanks, Mike. Are there further questions or comments from trustees?
And thanks to Lisa for finding time, or busy upstairs, and she did this for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's 13A, we did B, item 13C, Police Department's Items, School Resource Officer Weekly Update. It's in our packet.
Yep.
Possible action, Hire Sharon Stuntebeck and Megan Valak as Permanent Substitute Part-Time Crossing Guards.
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments needed here, just pretty straightforward?
Pretty straightforward, just for those times when we're short our crossing guards or they can't come in for whatever reason, sick, whatever, whatever it might be, we'd certainly like to have some substitutes out there and not put officers out in those intersections.
Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 3, Possible Action Approving the Employee Recognition Policy.
I'll make a motion to approve that recognition policy, and I want to thank the chief for bringing that forward.
Yep, I'll second that, and I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, this is actually the first policy that I haven't written. So this was written by Lieutenant Pagankov. We've been talking about recognize our employees. Nothing formal has been done at the police department. I'm not sure how it was done in the past, quite honestly. So this is, just sets forth some of the requirements that are needed, also sets forth some of the awards to be given out, hopefully on a regular basis. And I would like to also let the board know that when this does happen at the end of the year, we'd like to bring them to the board and have them be recognized publicly, so.
Thank you, chief.
I have a quick question. Excuse me. I noticed that included on this, on this chart, are recognition medals for firefighters and paramedics. Is this a state chart of ribbons and badges?
No, this is from a company that we normally get our ribbons from.
I see.
Any further questions? Can you say the motion's second to approve the employee recognition policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item D, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Market Wage Adjustments for Senior Center Employees. There's a note, the 2017 budget includes funding for market wage adjustments. 2017 budget impact is $6,320.98 for senior center adjustments. Assistant Senior Center Director's salary had been adjusted in 2016 and '17, and proposed wage adjustments, one with the senior center wages in the middle of the group of comparable communities. The recommended motion is to approve the senior center market wage adjustments as presented with the effective date of October 8, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything about this, Rachel?
Well, this comes to the fore as we have the open outreach case manager position, and we are finding it very difficult to fill because we're just not competitive with the wages. Recent study of the Dane County senior centers outside of Madison bears out the fact that we are currently paying the lowest wages of any of the senior centers in the county for that position, which helps explain why we're struggling to find somebody qualified to fill it. So that's one of the reasons that it's come up now. And we've been, as you guys well know, talking about bringing the wages up to where they should be for some time, so this seems like the appropriate time to consider it.
Thank you.
So being that this is gonna hit in October, Mike, do you have any concerns about actually funding it?
No.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? So we have the motion second to approve the senior center market wage adjustments as presented with the effective date of October 8, 2017. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Wisconsin Medicaid Program Provider Agreement and Acknowledgement of Terms of Participation. The recommended motion is to authorize the village president to sign the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any information we need here from staff or...
Well, the county is changing from county-based long-term support in 2018 to a state-based long-term support program. The state has contracted with slightly different providers than what the county had contracted with. So as sort of subcontractors, the village does provide some services that were reimbursed for. There are seniors who receive meals that are reimbursed by some of these programs. So it's simply a matter of getting the new contracts signed for the new providers so that we can continue to provide those services to seniors. And then, so we're really subcontractors to the county as they change providers.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, anyone? Can you say the motion's second to authorize the village president to sign the agreement for the Wisconsin Medicaid Program Provider Agreement and the Terms of Participation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, Preview of Investments, Building Permits and Impact Fees.
Sure, this is where you could see the comparison of building permits and this information.
Very good. How are we doing on the impact fees? Are we, any in jeopardy, or no?
No, actually, it's coming up. We're gonna talk about water impact fees.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on those? We'll go to item G, Discussion Possible Action, Reassignment of Custodian Position to Public Works and Authorize Full-Time Janitorial Services at Senior Center and Police Department. The recommended motion is to approve the reassignment of the custodial staff member from custodian to crewman with public works, effective October 6, 2017, and authorize director of public works to retain environmental control to undertake full-time janitorial duties of both the senior center and police department as needed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item H, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Well Number 6, Task Orders for Design and Bidding Services. Recommended motion, approve task order number 5 and 6 from Ruukkut Milke in amount of $33,131 and $34,830 for engineering services related to the design and construction of well number 6. The funding is from water impact fees.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Way to use those impact fees, Mike.
So with, if the board approves this motion, we are out of the, we're in the clear as far as having to refund impact fees.
Good.
And Lisa, very happy.
Yeah.
Unless they change the state law, that is, I should always say that.
Make staff really happy when they don't have to answer phones. And people say, "Why am I, why do I have this check?"
It's a lot of work, yeah.
Yeah. We want to keep Lisa happy.
So this is for, pardon?
So we want to keep Lisa happy.
Yeah. So this is for working on the well that, I think Jeff explains in the middle, west side.
Yep. Any questions? So we have the motion second to approve task orders 5 and 6 from Ruukkut Milke in amount of $33,131 and $34,830 for engineering services related to the design and construction of well number 6. Funding from water impact fees, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item I, Discussion Possible Action Regarding 2017 Budget Amendment 1, and the recommended motion is to approve that. So moved.
Second.
Any comments here, Lisa or Mike, that you need to make?
This, we'll have another, at least one, if not two, coming in.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So broad brush, how close to budget are you running right now? Obviously, you're running a little bit over.
The projected fund balance for the year, when Lisa ran it Friday, was actually better than we thought. And it's mainly to do with personnel, vacancies, and so I think we're actually gonna be, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be okay for '17.
So you think you're coming at budget?
Mm-hmm.
So this really isn't, maybe, I made an assumption I shouldn't have made. So this amendment to the budget is really just shifting money from a category to another category?
It's like chewing up for the money that we're donating to the food pantry.
Right.
It comes out of where the contingency was, and it goes into the actual budget line so that it doesn't look like it was an unbudgeted item.
Thank you.
You have other questions?
The Toro's running well again, Jeff?
Toro is running well, yes it is.
Good.
Thank you.
So we have the motion second to approve 2017 Budget Amendment 1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 14, Reported Committees, there is none. Item 15, Minutes Not Requiring Action, from August 9, 2017, Library Board Minutes and September Library Directors Report, and that is online for people who are watching. Item 16, Unfinished Business, there is none. Item 17, New Business, Approve of Pending New Operator Licenses Approved by the Police Department, Quick Trip Number 731, Dana Jensen and Oregon ICE Arena, Donald Cowan and Suzanne Cowan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 18 is future items we'll be looking at, and item 19, A Motion for Adjournment, please. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Thanks, everyone.